Good morning, it's 8:30. Call to order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, February 8th, 2017.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Renault?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for the invocation led by Reverend Scott Dickinson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for the community in which we live, we thank you for these men and women who lead us, and sometimes I think of it like the football analogy that you have all thousands of people who need exercise and 22 men on the field that desperately need a rest. And we see our people around our county and our city working so hard, and we as citizens all need to jump in and say, what can I do to help? And so, Lord, help us to do that. Lord, we pray for them, we pray for Derek as he picks up on the new responsibilities that he's already been doing, we pray that you guide him and give him wisdom and guidance as he does those things. For all the things that are happening in our county, we pray that you would just continue to watch over each of those who is leading the departments and doing all of that. We pray for our city, and, Lord, that you'd continue to keep us safe, watch over our first responders and all of those who protect us, and, Lord, just protect, watch over us as we get into this next season, and as the farmers are out there working and everybody's out there doing their thing, keep us safe. Thank you again for the great community in which we live, the great county in which we live, and those who lead us, continue to watch over and protect them, and, Lord, lead and guide them, we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
The Brigis Correspondents organizational business?
I don't have anything at this time.
All right, nothing to add? Public comment?
Sherry Geist?
All right.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Sherry Geist, P.O., Box 384, Ottawa. Don't want to be here today, but I felt it necessary to be here to discuss a couple of topics with you gentlemen. The first thing that I want to discuss with you is open meetings. You have on occasion, one occasion I can specifically talk about was December the 12th of 2016, you held a study session, and I'm sure you all know what study sessions are for, and that's to study and no action. That study session was only for executive session. That's a motion and a second to go into executive session, and study sessions aren't for that The next thing that I would like to talk about is executive sessions for attorney-client privileges. They must contain the motion in the subject, in the subject in the motion. It can be for pending litigation, employer-employee negotiations, confidential data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, student, patient, or resident of a public institution, acquisition of real estate, and matters of security of a public body or agency. Executive sessions for personnel of non-elected, the motion must contain the reason, a review evaluation, or to avoid invading the privacy of an employee. Executive sessions aren't just to go behind closed doors and ask questions. I am asking that you comply with the letter and the spirit of the law to avoid the appearance that you are using executive sessions inappropriately. Stating why necessary or desirable gives the public assurance that the executive session is permissible. My next topic is the transient guest tax. I know that's been a hot topic. On February the 9th of 2015, your former county administrator gave a PowerPoint presentation on how the transient guest tax was being used. He said that 51% of that money was going to personnel. Why is that such a big deal? In your 2015 county budget, the county attorney's budget was 93% personnel, the registered deeds was 97% personnel, the county appraiser was 92% personnel, planning and building was 87% personnel, the sheriff was 83% personnel, the clerk was 93% personnel, and the treasurer was 91% personnel. So why is 51% something bad? I believe there are two charter resolutions, being 96-1 and 03-01, that have not been repealed, dealing with transient guest tax. Charter resolution 96-1 establishes a committee known as the Convention and Tourism Committee. The committee shall consist of 12 members. The purpose of the committee was to make recommendations concerning the program and expenditures for the promotion of conventions and tourism. Charter resolution 03-01 only raised the rate to 6%. I believe there needs to be a charter resolution repealing the 12-member committee, which you guys have already done away with, and to give St. Joe Hospitality LLC transient guest tax monies. A charter resolution allows for a petition to be done, and if the petition is found to be sufficient, the question goes to the electors. I also believe a charter resolution would only pass if at least four of you voted yes. I have heard the state has been contacted and bond council has been contacted, but you have to know the questions to ask them before they can give you the correct answers. The City of Ottawa talked about placing one of the proposed sites in a tax increment finance district. This allows for the city to get all of the increased property tax money to pay improvements such as streets, water lines, sewer lines, electric, et cetera.
It's been five minutes. I'm afraid your time's up.
Are you serious?
You started at 32.
I started at 32, and your meeting started at 8:30?
That's what, yeah.
Your meeting started at 8:30, and you said I started at 32? So the prayer and the...
Thirty-three, it's been 38.
Yeah. So you won't allow me just a few more minutes for Sherry, will you?
That's never been the way it worked, Jean.
Another one of your pony deals. Jean Hurt, 107 Jefferson Street, Pomona, Kansas. Well, as we see, she's telling you a lot of information there, Chairman, so it sounds like something's wrong here. You better act on it, all of you. Don't you think, Weymeyer? No, don't want to talk again. That's real.
Commissioner will not take action or discuss items at this time.
Oh, boy. You know, I brought this to Derek's attention a minute ago, Monday night, the sheriff was there also, but I see, I don't know if he's not here. No, he's here, okay? He can verify what took place. The council decided that, especially from Rick Smith, that the contract with the sheriff on the amount of money increase was 8%. He wasn't going to have any deal with that. So the rest of them agreed, so they put another extension on it for another 30 days with the sheriff's contract. You know, they're the ones that are acting crazy because we've had this thing on there for over a month, and they kept extending it because they couldn't get the information to Derek, so I guess I guess you'll work something out with them probably, but I just don't understand the council of Pomona. The next thing I have is yesterday, and this is county business, Mr. Weymeyer. Pomona, Pomona School District, West Franklin School District, some time ago here, it's been a while since this started until we got it to court yesterday. And now, there's the judge's decision yesterday. West Franklin School District has violated the open records request of the State of Kansas, and the judge so agreed to that. But here's the other amazing thing, is they wanted, they wanted the attorney fees from what the district had spent on this where this person was not granted his open records, a little over $15,000. Judge told them, you're not getting that. Nope. So, this is big news now, because here's a school district now violated the law, and it's not over with yet, because I still have mine. I know what time it is, Weymeyer, so, and my issue with them is still there, and they're going to have a real tough time with mine, because they don't like, they don't like me being on the campus. But I have a right to be there, just like any other citizen. I have a right to be at open meetings, I should have a right to anything that goes on, because they, believe it or not, they're wanting to propose a bond issue on us. Well, it ain't going to happen. So, so there's going to be another issue. But you know, I'm going to go back to this again for Sherry. I think I applaud her for coming in here and telling you gentlemen what's wrong and what she saw and done, so I think if somebody's going to have to act on this. Thank you.
All right, I bring us to consent agenda. Items to approve on the consent agenda would be our minutes for February 1st meeting and our study session minutes from February 6th, and tax change orders and the amount of a positive $809.50. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda? There a second?
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renault?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
First item of business would be to approve a rezoning application. Larry's here to tell us about that.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Morning, Larry.
We have a couple of rezoning items on your agenda this morning. The first of those being the rezoning of approximately 8.64 acres from an A1 agricultural district to an RE residential estate zoning district. This request is somewhat unusual in that it's not creating any new parcels. The applicant in this case would like to sell that 8.64 acres that's depicted in the aerial photo attached as part of your staff report to the joining five-acre tract that faces out onto Texas Road. That land isn't very usable for agricultural purposes, and the applicant in this case and the property owner for the five-acre tract have agreed that this would be a suitable way to dispose of that, that land, and make it more usable for the person with the residence. So this request was considered by the Planning Commission, they have submitted to you a recommendation for the approval of the rezoning from the A1 to the RE residential state for the 8.64 acres, and to rezone the remaining acreage since it no longer meets the 40-acre minimum for A1 to the A2 zoning district. I have nothing further to add on that unless you have questions.
This where the bed and breakfast is? That with the rezoning?
Well, I may, I didn't have the agenda in front of me, I may have taken one out of order, Mr. Dunn. This isn't on the Dunn property, this is one filed by Ken Taylor. It's a little ways removed from the site that you're talking about, but it's up in the same general area.
Yeah, so that was Taylor?
Yeah, that's the second one on our agenda, but I don't see a problem with that.
Okay, I think we can skip to, so this will be the second item on our agenda we're considering. Any questions for Larry on that one? The Taylor rezoning application?
I'm very familiar with all that, that property there, makes a lot of sense to put that in the house, so, yep, I think that's the next one.
All right. Anyone else? Everybody familiar with it? I know we switched gears there. You have enough time?
It's kind of all together. Thought of now.
Take your time. If you're comfortable going forward? All right then. Is there a motion to approve the Taylor application to resume? All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Renault?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
All right, this would be the Dunn application listed as our first item of business that we'll consider.
My apologies, Commissioners, for getting those out of order. The request that was filed by Mrs. Dunn was to allow for the division of approximately 10 acres out of an 80-acre tract. The purpose for that would be to sell the existing residence along with the business that's been approved for that site, which was the bed and breakfast operation that's across the street from her primary operations, where that also includes a special use permit for the activities that are being conducted over there. The boundaries are shown, I believe, on one of the aerial photos attached as a part of your staff report. It depicts the area that they're taking out for the bed and breakfast in blue, and the parent tract is shown in red. The Planning Commission considered this at their meeting earlier this year and have forwarded a recommendation to the county commissioners to approve the rezoning of approximately 10 acres from A1 to the RE residential state zone.
Questions for Larry, or are you ready to make a motion?
Just want to make it clear that there's no relationship to this.
All right, Robin. All right, is there a motion to approve the Dunn rezoning application?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renault?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Maybe the agenda gone backwards. Maybe the agenda reversed on that.
The third item of business would be to consider authorizing the chairman to execute the biennial bridge inspection program.
As you recall, Franklin County is required by the Federal Highway Administration and KDOT to inspect our bridges every two years, and the fraction-critical bridges will be inspected again next year because they're supposed to be done on a 12-month interval. Proposal has been obtained from Cook Flat. Cost per bridge is $82 for a total of $19,762. The request is a motion authorizing the chairman to execute the bridge inspection proposal.
Everybody familiar with this?
When we get those results back, do we have a, like a life expectancy on those reports and so forth?
Yes.
And so that would tell us, planning down the road, which bridges are going to be needed to replace and so forth like that?
There's, there are bridges listed in the report that are eligible for replacement.
That number's a sufficiency rating, is that correct?
Yes.
That'd be the, yep. All right.
Is this the same rate as last time, Jim?
No, sir, it's $4 a bridge higher.
Is there a motion to approve the agreement?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renault?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Fourth item is consider the approval of a resolution waiving the GAAP requirements for 2016.
Commissioners, we do this annually, generally the administrator in past years has taken care of this for us. We actually have two of these today when I was contacted by our auditor to get him some documents for our audit, and included the gap waiver, and that did not get done last year, and he said it was perfectly fine to do both 16 and 17 here at the beginning of the year to satisfy the requirement for last year to make everything appropriate for our audit. So the first item here, the first gap waiver is for 2016, and then your next item would be for the 2017 gap waiver.
Do we need two separate motions, you think?
Yes, because it's two separate resolutions.
Okay.
Is that general accepted accounting practices or something like that?
Principles.
Principles, yeah.
First one would be for 2016?
I make a motion to approve the resolution waiving the gap requirements for 2016.
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renault?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Continue then?
And then the second one, as I discussed, was the waiver for 17.
That'd be our fifth item of business, is there a motion to approve waiving those requirements?
Also move.
Second.
Commissioner Renault?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Staff reports.
Couple of things I wanted to discuss with you today. The first, and this was brought to me by Commissioner Dunn regarding our burn permit procedure, that is something that Alan Radcliffe and I, along with Sheriff Richards and eventually Steve Hunting are taking a look at. In the past, we've received complaints on that, and so we're trying to collectively come up with an idea that works better if we're all involved. As we're currently in burn season, I don't anticipate us changing anything until probably this summer, but I know Roy has brought that up, and I wanted to let you know that it's something we are working on, so. And then, secondly, we're coming along pretty well on our finance officer job description. We've worked with Janet and Debbie Huff on really trying to refine that and make sure that the duties of that position aren't unduly overlapping what goes on in the courthouse, and my hope is that we'll have that description to the board for its review here, hopefully within a week or so. So that's where we're at on that, and that's all I have today.
Sheriff, you have anything?
Kind of piggyback on what the administrator just said, that is a process we've been working on for, it's been quite a while, so I know that there's a lot that goes in, has been going into that, so. Also, as was already mentioned during public comments at the Pomona City Council meeting, there was discussion about that contract, I've talked with the administrator about that. I've also been able to go back, locate the contracts going back to 2011, and I provided Derek with the numbers for that. The amount on that has not changed from where it is now, it has been, that part, that was set in 2014, there have been no changes since then, since that point. So that's kind of where we are on all of that, and that we are hiring in dispatch, and we're hiring for correction staff as well. We did have our, the company that had installed the servers for the camera system in the jail was in yesterday, because there were some problems that were being noted in that, it was due to, in our control room, it is very, very hot, and so we were working with maintenance yesterday to figure out how we can get the temperature down in there, and it was, there was no damage that was done. The temperatures were what they considered to be critical temperatures, but there was no damage done to everything. We got on it, the staff got on it pretty quick and got them called in, so, and we did work with maintenance yesterday to get that done, and they were responsive to that as well, so. And other than that, if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
I have one from the Rantoul City Council meeting Monday night. Did you get us, get some calls on something about some explosives or something going on down there? Are you aware of anything with that?
I'm not, no.
No?
Okay, I'll visit with you afterwards then.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Nothing? Janet? All right. Commissioner comments, board reports. You want to start? Sounds like you have something.
Yeah, a city council meeting at Rantoul Monday night, one of the major things they were discussing was trying to make sure the city was cleaned up a little bit and trying to work on some of the abandoned vehicles around town and some other property issues that they were trying to get clean. They had a question on the bill from the county with the salt and sand, and they were going to contact the county to check on that. And they do have a blighted property that they're trying to come up with some funds to, I guess the old city hall building maybe to get it taken down, so, trying to help them explore some possibilities there to maybe get that cleaned up as well. They also have a vacant, I don't know if I can say it's a vacant, trying to think how to word it, they have a council position that apparently the person has not been in attendance for quite some time, and I think they were going to talk to Janet too about the options of what they could do to remedy that. That's pretty much it.
All right. Rick, you have anything?
Yeah, yesterday I attended the RC&amp;D meeting, Heather Morgan from Project 17 was there, she talked about a partnership grant that she's going to write for the 17 counties, she'll be trying to share that grant, it's going to be used for, just to try to help local businesses or local individuals that want to participate in growing vegetables or whatever and bringing them to farmer's market, they have some money that possibly will be available to help with some of that. They talked about the Food and Farm Task Force, they approved a donation of $200 for the Elsworth Bike Program, that money's used to buy Elsworth, to buy parts and stuff for the bicycles, they get that back at a later date, but they've been there years. Updated to Kansas Feeding the Hungry, and that was pretty much most of that meeting. On Monday night, I attended Williamsburg City Council, just some of the old business, they talked about the ATVs again and some ordinances they've been looking into, and they talked about a truck, now they're looking at possibly purchasing a new truck for the city. The new business, they had a water issue out north on Colorado, or California Road, they had a water break, they talked about that, and also talked about the sidewalk around the park, what they were going to do with it, and then had a discussion on the streets, when they were going to start rocking that, and how they were going to go about that. That's the two meetings I've attended since the last meeting.
I got a notification from the area agency on aging, their meeting's the 23rd, and Liz would like, Randy wants to be on that board, need to let her know so she can get Randy information.
They've worked... February 23rd?
Yeah, February 23rd.
Okay.
At 10 o'clock.
All right. Derek and I attended the FCDC meeting yesterday morning. Largely routine business, got an update on leads they're following. Talked a little bit about the board retreat we had, although there's not a, a report out of that from the person who led that yet. I can't think of anything extraordinary to report.
I think you pretty well covered it.
All right. That would leave us with a motion to adjourn.
I have one more comment real quick.
You bet.
I just want to say on the public comment, we have the five-minute rule for a reason. We have to have that, and we know that. But Sherry made some comments, and, and I would like to hear more of those comments. I think you need to, if you get a chance, to set up maybe a meeting with Sherry and talk about her items, if she's willing to talk about it, because some of them sound like legit concerns, and I would like to know what they were and if that works out.
I am more than happy to meet with Sherry.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. All right, all in favor? They're adjourned.